All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the Wednesday, March 8, 2023, Select Board meeting, joined by the Finance Committee. It is our FY '20, part of our 2024 proposed budget overview of the departments. I will let the Finance Committee open their meeting.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So we believe this is the March 8 meeting of the Finance Committee. I'll call the meeting order. Your call with us tonight, that number is Lynch. We'll always have constant contact every day. Call it.
All right, thank you. Before we go to Inspection Services, I do know that we received some updated numbers on schools. So if one of you...
I'll start.
Okay.
So we received this yesterday. As you know, we've been working with the school district to try to get the number more to what we would like it to be. Freetown has also been very forward-leaning. There's some questions about special ed especially. And it's my understanding that since the time they received the last week's revisions, which all of those did was incorporate state aid, they made some additional cuts, which includes a cut of bus, a special ed teacher, and two van drivers from the special ed budget. So that brings our assessment increase down to $493,554. As you recall, we had $540,000 and change increase in the proposed budget. So we're in pretty good shape on that one now. There are some issues in later years that are concerned. We've had some conversations with business manager regarding positions that are still being funded by ESAR. There are several. There's about $380,000 in operating costs that are being carried by ESAR right now. The plan for transition is cloudy, but in '25, it's going to have to come, you know, it's going to have to go local. They have some school choice money that they can use to do other things. There's some ideas that they have. There's been no determination for sure that I know as to how that would happen. Worst case, that would be a big hit on us. So something to be aware of.
Okay. Anything to add, Todd?
No, just for the audience, the ESAR grants are federal-funded that came out of the COVID pandemic, and they expire in 2024. They're not like the other education grants that are renewable allocation grants. So to the extent that permanent or full-time positions have been funded, it's a fairly large concern going forward in '25 and '26.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have any questions on that before we move forward? Okay. That being said, I believe it's Nate Darling up first in the hot seat for Inspection Services.
Take my time off. I only got 15 minutes left.
Page 43 in your books, in your binders.
So we're not really reading through all the information. We didn't the other night anyways. But, you know, if anyone has any questions on it, because these are some of the bigger departments for the town that we're doing tonight, please feel free to ask. I'd also like to point out that the organization charts were new to us last year, and I really seem to like those a lot, too. It gives some, and so does some of the narrative stuff. So if you want to just sort of run through the, you know, the high points, I know that just for everyone that's here, I know that we've established in a lot of the budgets that we're seeing of vehicle fuel increase. We're seeing also, I think, trash removal increase generally across the board. So if when you're talking about your budget, you want to mention it, great. If, you know, we don't ask, it's because we determined the other night that it's going to be that way across the board. So anyways, take it away, Nate.
All right. So this year, we were asked to, you know, try to maintain a level budget the best we could. Todd is always helpful year in, year out on crafting the budget for me. Any questions I have, he always helps out. This year, for me, was a huge sigh of relief because I found myself with help. Paul knee over here, he's up next. Tremendous help took a huge burden off of my department, my staff, and I'm able to kind of catch up a little bit. So that's been great. As far as Building Department goes, we are just increasing contractual requirements, salary positions. Conservation, we've kind of pondered conservation for a few years. Our actual numbers aren't as high as what our budgeted numbers are. And we were contemplating reducing that, and we decided to keep it where it is because the master plan actually recommends a full-time agent, and this represents only an 18-hour person. So we figured it was a good placeholder. We use it, we do. If we don't, we don't. As you look around our community, you'll see a lot of the good land is used up. The land that's available is stuff with, you know, bad soils or wetland implications, stuff like that. So as we move forward, we'll probably see a higher level of conservation agent needs. So that's why we left that in. As I go through this, there was just a couple of high points, the conservation agent being one, in case anybody saw that anomaly. But the percentages increases are all hovering around 2.3%, 2.6%. The only one that was over 2.5% was the Board of Health. The Board of Health on contracted professional services/ rabies. We do a rate, we used to do a rabies clinic every year. COVID kind of slowed that down a little bit. So there's always been $1,500 in the budget for a vet in a rabies clinic. This past couple of years, we saw a need to provide vaccines, right, for, you know, COVID and those type of things. Those are all reimbursed, but we went through that process. Our public health nurse has established a wonderful program in Freetown. She also does it in Marion. So we added money to pay for vaccines and for a physician in order to sign off on administration of those vaccines. The one thing to note on that is that is a reimbursable expense. So once we administer a vaccine, we're able to put in for reimbursement for that. You know, we're primarily looking at our seniors, our folks that are homebound, teachers, staff, folks that can come here and get it. But it is a reimbursable expense. Other than that, everything is pretty much level or just salary increases. If anybody's got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Anyone questions?
Just that you're a part-time staff for your special services that I know you didn't fill, Nate.
Yep.
I'm hoping that there'll be a plan to have that filled.
Yeah, it would be great. And just to expand on that a little bit is, you know, in the creation of the Planning Department, we did have a full-time Inspection Services clerk that did an awful lot of work for us. She's probably dedicated 15 to 18 hours a week in her planning and zoning board function. She supported the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals. When the Planning Department was created, that staff position moved over there. And what we did is we appropriated a part-time person to make the department whole again in Inspection Services. Because of transition and wondering exactly how things were going to align, we've been utilizing a floater position. And I know that I heard it come up on Monday night. This might be a great time to make sure we solidify the position, the part-time position that I had appropriated last year. Solidify that, and then the floater position can be reassigned through HR and used where needed. Thank you for bringing that up.
Anyone else?
I have a question. You mentioned the conservation agent. If you recall, last year, there was a big discussion about the conservation agent going from a part-time to a full-time. And looking at the year-to-date, you know, expenses for the salary for the conservation agent, we've only spent a third of his salary through February. My question is, I'm not asking to reduce it, okay? My question is, the discussion was about doing inspections with conservation land and stuff like that. And is there a program in place to do that?
There's a program in place on following up on inspections relative to notices of intent and orders of condition. As far as, like, conservation is the steward of various properties in the town of Lakeville. Currently, the agent doesn't go out and monitor those town-owned properties that have a conservation restriction. We could do something like that. But as far as permitting or work done in the jurisdictional zone, he follows up on those. And we have a process in place to do that.
The reason why I bring it up is because you know the discussion that happened about that, about the conservation agent not being able to monitor any properties that the town bought, either through CPA or whatever it happens to be. And I think that that needs to be looked at. And it shouldn't be an excuse because there is available time for that person to do that.
I agree, I would agree with you 100%. So if I can reach out to the Conservation Commission and ask them to actually create policy or checklists of how we're going to monitor those properties. I don't want to get too deep into that, but it might be where this is a shared position. So I don't know if there's flexibility where you have this amount, just like we use with our purveying inspectors, where you have alternates. We could probably put somebody that might be more suited to, you know, get around the conservation properties for management of that. Certainly entertain that conversation.
I just don't want to see an excuse to say we don't have somebody to do it. And that's what was said.
And we have plenty of funds.
And that's not true. So there is resources available to do it. We just have to make sure that it gets done.
Yep, I can definitely...
We had a long discussion about this last year during the budget, if you remember.
Yep, I do.
So along those lines, you know, I'm involved a lot with the Assawampse Pond Complex. And there's a whole bunch of people that come in from all different, you know, towns and they, you know, different positions. And, you know, we do have a lot of folks in town who are interested in trying to save open space and talking about doing things like land trusts. And I mean, I would venture a guess that, you know, we may need more work, you know, done. And that person could assist with some of that work. You know, I also think with some of the things that we went through this past year, it would have been, you know, good to have someone really active who could have helped participate, you know, explain, you know, why certain things like acquiring perhaps a golf course may not have been in the best interest of the town and, you know. But anyways, so I definitely think that we're on the cusp of that position needing to be doing more for the town.
Yeah, in the past, so we had an interim conservation agent that was a wetland scientist down the Cape. And she was filling in. And when we filled the position, we kept her on as a consultant because she was a valuable resource. I guess, you know, to me, what our actuals were in 2021 and 2022 is probably what it is going to take to maintain the current services. I would bounce this off our Conservation Commission, but if we could take some of that money and move it into a consulting fee, you know, a consulting line item, or if it really matters where it's spent. So, you know, we could hire a wetland scientist or somebody that knows about tree disease. We got that beach leaf disease that's running rampant through the town of Lakeville right now. We've been out all of our beach trees. So if we had some kind of, where you could hire a specialist to come in and identify that, that would be a good opportunity if the board was so inclined to do something like that.
Okay. Anything else, anybody else? No one on Finance Committee? All right. Okay. That wasn't too bad.
No.
All right. Next, we have facilities. Paul knee.
Page 48.
We'll go easy on the new guy.
Thank you.
I can only speak for myself, though.
I asked for it.
So this whole, you know, concept of facilities is still, you know, fairly new. I know when I started, each facility was sort of under its own department. So now we actually have, a few years later, we do have a facilities whole section. So, you know, I don't, of course, we see your salary in there. But, I mean, overall, I don't know that there's anything huge on here that... Does anyone have any questions for Paul? I don't know how much he could tell us, you know, about this. If you want to have to say something, that's fine, but...
Sure, just before we're done, remember that we're giving a full overview of the facilities program on Monday as well.
Yeah, and we are going to go over all the facilities and the programs on Monday night. So I don't necessarily know that we want to get into specific facilities tonight. This is mostly just to talk about the actual facilities budget and the director's position, which is new. So any questions for Paul?
Do you have sufficient staff? I mean, just looking, you have three park climbers.
I do. One has actually, he's given his resignation letter, but I'm actually trying to convince him to possibly do a leave of absence instead. He's got some transportation issues that's given him some difficulty. But he's hoping that that's going to change. So I think I might just hold off on filling his position for a short time until we get a better idea of how that's going to play out.
The only really big thing is its own. So everything moved out of the other budgets into... And so there'll be reductions, I'm sure. We'll notice.
Nothing from the Finance Committee? Yes, sure.
On your contracted services, I see there's a $10,000 drop. But what exactly contracted services are you using as your staff fully empty by time? So what's...
Well, I don't really have the answer to that question.
I'll take a run at it. So this year, we introduced that line in FY '23, the $30,000 you see. And the intent, that was before we had Paul's position. And the intent was that we had a number of projects, not major, but mid-sized projects, that we needed some professional help through project management services to get them moving. So Ari went out and solicited proposals from a number of firms to assist with these smaller facility projects. As we're moving forward to '24, now that we have Paul on board, he's been able to take a lot of that away. And what, so we thought it would be better to move that $10,000 into maintenance of various town facilities. So we've level funded the budget, but put more into maintenance. And this would still allow him the ability to bring in an engineer or other professional that he might need for a specific concern.
Some good examples are the group we're using as an OPM for the, we use for the stage pavilion and the ramp at the library. Paul recently had to call in an inspector to look at the poles at John Pond Park. Things like that, those will all be kind of, you know, in there. So just start to see history develop there.
Thank you for your question.
Great.
First of all, just to say welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Haven't had a chance to meet you yet.
Appreciate it. Nice meeting you.
So as you've had a chance to start to settle in and start to see your first pole this year coming up, I know the capital plan does have some maintenance projects on it, but are you still kind of assessing the state of everything right now? Is there a possibility that at all-town meeting, we might see some other poles creep up?
Absolutely. You know, every building needs work. Trim, painting, weather, HVAC, you know, all these things are going to creep up. So do I see a huge increase in the budget next year? I don't, I don't see that right now.
If I can just jump in real quick, your budget in the way that this was set up from the beginning is really preparing Paul for success. So as he said, he's going to identify more projects as he goes. But I don't think that there's going to be a financial liability there. So the budget is there to do this. And as Todd alluded to, there's a shift from talking about what we're going to do to doing what we're going to do. And that's what Paul brings to the table. So I look super forward to working with him. Every single day, it's a hoop, and I'm seeing stuff get done. So he's a good part of the team.
One of the things I've charged Paul facilities with is doing a full scope facilities assessment. Gives a good global sense of the condition of facilities and what we need to deal with. Some of that, a lot of it's going to be just small stuff that needs to happen, but some big things, too. So that could inform and impact the CIP over time. But a good deal of it's going to be funded out of, you know, we have a good amount of money here for repairs and maintenance. I think that we can get a fair amount done with that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just to follow up to Brian's question. There's two pieces to that, Brian. One is the capital plan, as you know. Anything over $10,000 gets on the particular on the capital plan. And there's a separate line item in the budget for repair and maintenance that something breaks, whatever it happens to be. I don't know, the number was $70,000 last year. I don't know what it is this year. But so there is a piece in there that already handles day-to-day ongoing, you know, maintenance. And then there's capital expenditure items that get put on that capital plan that are $10,000 and greater.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Very nice meeting you.
We good? All right. I do believe planning is up next.
Page 33.
What do you got?
Well, our budget is rather simple. It's basically myself and Kathy, Ari, who's our planning and zoning board clerk. And a few thousand dollars for expenses. And that is our entire budget.
If I can, is somebody from the planning board going to come to talk to us about this tonight, too, or...
No, this is the planning department budget.
Okay, but in conjunction with the planning board, right?
No, we support the planning board. We support the zoning board, Open Space Committee, and other boards and committees as is necessary.
Right. But I know that the planning board had their own budget. So I believe it looks like it might have just gotten rolled in here.
That's correct.
That's correct. Yeah, last year.
That's correct.
That was done last year.
It always had a few hundred dollars for board expenses, three to 500.
And the chair used to come for that. Right, no, I remember. But so these, you know, these, the training program, because I know that there's seminars and things like that that the planning board has attended. I just want to make sure that was all built in here as well.
Yes, they've been sent out notifications when CHAPA is the organization, Citizens, I forget what the numbers, letters stand for, but they've been sent out to both the zoning board and the planning board when they have had conferences.
Does anyone else have any questions? Again, I'm thinking the 6.8% is probably a contractual...
Step plus COLA.
Yeah. Anyone else, any questions? Any questions on planning?
I do.
Oh, okay.
The increase in the hourly wages is up almost 7%. Is that year-over-year? Is that increased hours or is that a pay rate increase?
That's what we just said.
That's Kathy Murray, yeah.
Yes, step and pay rates.
There are a few, Adam, there are a few you'll see throughout here by virtue of the new contract. When they had a step and a COLA at the same time, it kind of compounded. And so a couple of people got, got a little larger than normal raise.
7% seems really high.
There are a few of them scattered throughout.
It just seems high, though, especially for a town position.
Well, if you think about someone getting a step, step's going to be 3% or 4%, and they get a COLA.
Yeah. That should usually be around 5% to 6%. We're looking at almost 7%. So it just seems high, unless you're talking, because then you talk, if they do hourly hours and they use overtime, it's going to creep up higher.
Well, it depends on which step they're going to. As long as steps are a little bit different, but, you know...
All right, I'm just wondering, I think it seems high. And it seems high for a town position.
So I think I mentioned this the other night, too, but you may not have been here. Three years ago, when we did the budget, we didn't have the actual for all the unions. We actually do this as an actual because we have the contracts with labor and fire have been finished, have been completed. So this is actual, too. It's not, three years ago, we put a big chunk under human resources because we only had estimates. So those two contracts have been finished. We're still negotiating with police. Does anyone else have any questions?
I have a question. Last year, when we talked about the open space plan, you know, we provided additional hours and funding and so forth to try to get that done. What's the status of the open space plan?
So the status of the open space plan is it is virtually complete. It may be on the next Open Space Committee meeting. They met last week. We did a close to a final review. It may be ready either at the next meeting or the meeting after to be voted and submitted to the state. So I think, hopefully, it'll be, we'll have it complete for the next meeting.
The open space meeting or the select board meeting?
You can say a relation for comments?
Yes. Okay. And then we'll, yes, and we'll submit it to the select board for comments.
Because the select board has to actually approve it before it can submit to the state.
Even the preliminary draft?
Not the preliminary, well, I would think we want to review the preliminary draft before we get to that point so we can look at it and see if anything needs to be changed or modified. But we haven't seen anything to this point.
Sure.
But the board has to vote on it to send it to the state.
Okay, yes, we will.
The other thing, I don't know if you were here the other night, Sunday night. We were talking about the GIS mapping, you know, having to do with what needs to be done. And I know Ari's trying to get a committee together to address that concern. But there's multiple layers of GIS that are available from the state that we're not utilizing. And I just want to make sure, once again, that that gets followed up on because you, you know, as the planner, you know, the Board of Health and the Planning Board and so forth and so on, building inspector.
Public Works.
Public Works, there is over there. You know, they're all using it. And they can't use it unless they have the updated information.
Right. Well, I don't know whether we can transfer the state data to the town GIS. I'm neither GIS specialist, but it is all, what the state has is available on the Mast GIS website. And I oftentimes log into that because it has certain layers that our GIS does not have. So I'm sure sometimes some of the other departments use that.
This was, Brian, remember this? This was looked at a couple of years ago, you know, in looking at all the stuff that was available and establishing the links between the, I guess we said Mast GIS?
Yes.
Okay. And what needed to be done, you know, to do that. And two years have gone by and nothing's been done. And I'm not picking on you because you're a girl and you've been here a year.
You've been here a year.
But, you know, this is pretty important.
Yeah, I don't know enough about GIS systems to whether we can link or download that information into our system or whether it has to get, you know. But we can certainly put that information on our... or whether it has to get, you know, uh, but we can certainly put that information on our webpage that, you know, that if you're looking for additional mapping, that you can find it at mass GIS and, um.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Plan, uh, plan call? Okay, thank you. Next, we have. Fire.
Page thirty-nine.
Hi. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Um, do you wanna give us a, a little bit of a review, a summary?
Well, um, this year's budget, the proposed budget, uh, represents essentially, um, contractual obligations, uh, obligations, you know, for, uh, agreements made for compensation, things like that. Uh, it, uh, it's a positive thing in a sense that we're, we're more competitive with area fire departments. And the hope is that our recruitment and, and retention issues become, uh, less of a problem for us. Um, because there's, as you know, there's a lot of, uh, related problems to that, to that lack of retention and something that we're trying to correct. And, and one of the elements and one of the pieces to that correction is, is compensation, so we can be more competitive. When I took over in two thousand eighteen, uh, there was basically a, uh, a needs assessment done on the fire station. We identified a lot of deficiencies, some of them had to do with capital, some of them had to do with personnel and operations and all sorts of things. And, um, like everything in government or any other operation, there's an expense related in, in changing the operation of a department. Um, but we, but I was gratified to see that we also, we also paid for those, uh, changes as well. This operation has yielded, um, a hundred and twelve percent increase in our, in our revenue just from, from EMS services. Um, so we've doubled our revenue, more than doubled our revenue. We've been very successful in our grant writing initiatives, uh, several hundred thousands of dollars in grant, uh, writing. We've doubled our fees related to fire prevention. We're, we're bringing in approximately twenty thousand dollars, uh, a year annually in fees. And when you, when you connect our expenses with our revenue, um, even with the, uh, the projected expense of the ladder truck next year, we're still costing the town or, or, or our burden on the town or the tax dollar is actually less than it was in two thousand eighteen with this revenue. So, we feel pretty proud about that. And, and so it's important to me because I ask for a lot and it's expensive and it's difficult for, for elected officials to agree to all this, this investment in the department. But it's important me to, for me to connect it all to the revenue that we provide as well. And it's not, we don't make money to be, we're not profitable, we're not a, a for-profit operation. But it's important for us to pay for as much as we can of, of the, of the service. We, we, our goal is to provide the best service we possibly can. And along the way, if we can find money or revenue to help offset that cost, we're gonna, we're gonna take advantage of it. So, uh, that's where we stand today.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up for questions to FinCom first.
What are fire prevention fees?
So, we charge fees for certain types of inspections.
Okay.
Um, we charge fees for burn permits, uh, things like that.
So, just all those?
Yeah, and we, the town, uh, one of the, probably the most, uh, common fee we charge is for property transactions. When you sell your house, we come in and, and we charge fifty dollars and you get a nice certificate that you bring to your closing saying that your house is quote compliant. It's a, it's by law, it's required for, for a property transfer.
Education's up a bit, um, for the past three years.
What's that?
Education.
Well, so, so, so contractually, they, they, uh, our firefighters receive incentives to go to school. So, based on what degree they have, um, they, they, they get a bonus. And it ranges anywhere from fourteen percent down to, I forget what it was for, for associate's degree. But fourteen, fourteen point five percent is the, a master's degree bonus.
So, that created two hundred and eleven percent increase?
Um, actually, that's part of, uh, we have two, we have a, a chief and a deputy that both have master's degrees. Okay. And that's a, that's a, a recent development that that was included.
And the change from, uh, contract wages for the tenants, thirty-seven percent, is that due to promotions?
That's due to my failure to get a captain. So, um, which isn't a big deal, it's all just a title. Um, we, we funded a captain's position and in the course of negotiations, there's gives and takes and, and the captain's position didn't survive negotiations. And so the, the, the amount that was budgeted previously for that, for that position was transferred back into lieutenant.
Okay, that's just a shift.
Exactly, and then the, the rest of it is just, uh, normal pay raises.
Am I reading these numbers right? Reduction of employee turnover from a hundred and twenty-five percent to twenty-five percent?
So, one of the awful things is, uh, is our senori. Um, and, and, uh, and we've been historically a training ground. Um, we have, when I travel and go to classes in other departments or go to meetings, I always have a Lakeville firefighter, a former Lakeville firefighter coming up to me. Uh, so we fight hard to change the culture and, and try and, uh, you know, there's, there's things like the, uh, initiatives the selectmen took as far as improving our facilities, the temporary measures before we get a new building. Uh, those are all designed to make people want to stay. Um, and, and I think what they should take out of this is we're making a difference. We're making things, we still have people leaving, um, but just not as quite, quite as often. And, uh, and, I mean, it's nothing to be proud of yet, but, uh, I mean, it is improving.
Healthcare change helped a lot.
Excellent, yeah, that's a good point as well. So, again, like the compensation is increasing, that our healthcare is more competitive among towns, so, uh, there's been a lot of collaboration among, among the selectmen to help, the select board to help me, uh, fix things.
So, it's actually two parts, uh, two things. One is that in my daily, in my day job, I speak to, spend a lot of time on firehouses.
Mm-hmm.
Claims, and I will say, I've run into a lot of firefighters that have come from Lakeville and I'm talking as far as Southwick.
Yeah.
Um, and, yeah, they pretty much said that was actually their goal was to get their feet wet and then move on. So, that was a sad thing to hear.
It is.
Uh, it, it was a lot to do with conditions, it was. It, well, no, you, it wasn't, you know, the town itself, it was, they were just looking for a better house. Um, and I hope we were aggressive with that. Um, but I did, you had mentioned revenues with, so most of the rev, the revenue bringing in, assuming from EMS is that.
That's correct, yeah.
You're not charging for, uh, for fire calls yet, but that wouldn't be a bad idea. Um, uh, so is that increase as a result of the deputy chief being really good at filling out the paperwork? Or is it because you have second round ones? Because if that type of increase, let's get a third one.
Yeah, well, um, part of it, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of different reasons. So, documentation's improved, you can't, you can't bill for what you don't document. And so we, we, uh, you know, we created a QA QI program, quality assurance program, basically sets the standard for how calls are supposed to be documented. Uh, my deputies in charge of that. Um, the other thing is that I pay attention to it, uh, meaning that when there's, um, uh, bad debts and things like that, it's attended to right away. And I streamline the process for billing, um, because the, there's a correlation between the amount of time that, uh, ambulance call is processed and the time that's, it's billed out, um, your, your collection rate is affected by that. So, instead of having a call sit there waiting to be collected for two, three months, now it's within a week, it's off the door and they're able to process the claims. That's huge in car accidents, because you, there's a cap on the, on the, uh, on the payout related to car insurance. Um, we modified our, our car accident policy bill, uh, for billing, because, um, we have contractual agreements with different providers. So, if we may charge a thousand dollars for an ambulance run, but if we're in a contract with a certain provider, we may only get five hundred dollars in revenue. That's not true for car accidents, we build insurance, car, car insurance directly. So, that modification, uh, created more revenue for us, because, uh, auto insurance pays out at a hundred percent of whatever we build. So, these are all like things that, that adjustments that we made that yielded a lot of revenue back to the town.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you.
And chief, there's a follow up to that, calls for service are up as well, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
And that's an important factor as well.
So, we're, we're, we're punching above our, our weight. Uh, we rely heavily on callback, full time in, on call. Um, we're up, we average about ten percent increase in call volume per year since I've, since I've been here. Um, and the problem with relying heavily on callback is that it's, there's a lot of volatility and there's a lot of expenses that are unattractive, like when you're paying out overtime, so many people hate overtime. But the, the choice is you pay overtime or you pay salaries for new employees and one makes the other go away. And, and so, and so you, you just have to decide, decide what you're most comfortable with. The volatility of, of calling people in when there's calls or having that person in the building all the time and taking on that expense as well. It's, it's a juggling act really. Um, and, uh, really it's, I can make a recommendation, but it's our leadership that has to decide what the, what the town's most comfortable with and, and especially in these economic times, it's a tough decision to make.
If I can, um, are mutual aid numbers included in that, in those calls?
In the revenue?
No, in the, what we were just talking about, the call volume.
The call volume, yeah, it's, it's, it's toll, toll calls, so it would include mutual aid as well.
And has our mutual aid, um, responses gone up too? From last year?
I, I haven't really tracked. I pay very close attention to Middleborough. Um, and our Middleborough numbers up until recently were, were significant. We were, we were going there quite often. Uh, within the last three or four months, we've seen a significant reduction, almost half. And part of that is, um, uh, you know, I've, I've, I've made you all aware of, of the problem and, you know, you, you guys took it seriously and, and, um, and on your behalf, I, I've reached out to Middleborough and, and advocated for a solution. So, we've seen about fifty, fifty-one percent decrease in, uh, our ambulances going to Middleborough over the last, I, I think it's probably five months. Um, I did receive some bad news today, that the, the Middleborough contract with Brewster didn't turn out as rosy as they hoped it'd be. So, um, I'll, I'll circle back on that with you all, if that's something that impacts me.
Didn't you tell us that they also ordered another ambulance as well?
So, they, what they were intending to do is to add a, a third ambulance. So, Brewster provides, private ambulance company provides two ambulances to, to the town of Middleborough. Um, what they, what Middleborough was advocating for and what I was, I was promised was a third ambulance, so they would rely less on us. Um, we had a peak of thirty visits to Middleborough in a month, which is insane. I think we were averaging a triple over there about every, I think it was every eighteen hours, um, which is just not. And what I did was I communicated to them the money that we made. I had our billing company, uh, filtered the revenue that we made off of Middleborough residents and put that up in front of them. And I tried to get them to use that as, as, uh, to, to show Brewster that they had money to be made if they added an ambulance. And it seemed to get traction, but, um, I had to check back in with the chief Thompson today because I, I had heard from a, a third party that, that it may have fallen through. So, um, I'll stay on top of it.
Did it fall through?
Uh, I got, my blood pressure went up a little bit, but I think it did.
That's a serious problem, especially for coverage here in our town, that, you know, we only have so many resources, you know, covering our calls. So, if you're giving one mutual aid a day, you know, for Middleborough, you know, that takes our staff, you know, our firefighters out of here and paramedics, which is just as important, which means the callbacks and so on and so on. And I don't have to tell you, and panic wouldn't tell you, that going to these hospitals now, that you don't honestly drop off the patient, that's a terrible thing to say. But you go to these, you go to these hospitals now and you're there for two, three hours, you know, and that's a serious problem. And so, that needs to be addressed, because we're exposed from a town standpoint of not having the resources available in our own town for coverage. And I know you get callbacks, you know, but a lot of times, and I, I don't know all the callbacks, but, you know, are you getting paramedic service? Our goal was, as you know, a few years ago, was to have paramedic service for every firefighter that we have. And we did that, we accomplished that. But if you're taking that paramedic firefighter out of here and putting him in another town and we're left naked, that, that's a serious problem. And so, that should be, I know Ari's aware of it too and I've discussed this.
Honestly, you know, to sound provincial here, but, you know, Lakeville Fire Rescue is for Lakeville.
Right.
It's not, it's not, you know, mutual aid means provide support and we, and we, but, but it's, it should be a two-way street. And I don't, I don't see Middleborough coming to mutual aid here too very often, so.
What Middleborough does for us, that's exceptional, is they'll send every one of their guys, every last guy that they have into town for a fire.
Yeah.
But as far, it not only happens, you know, that only happens a few times a year, we're, we're going there daily. Uh, so it's not, it's, it's not balanced.
Right.
The model, I mean, our relationship with Free Town is almost perfect, where we give and we receive back and forth equally. We, we, we train together, we, you know, we're, it's just, it's imperfect balance, that's the way it's supposed to work.
Symbiotic.
Um, Middleborough, uh, the chief's aware of the problem. He says he's trying to fix the problem. One of the solutions that he, that he suggested that is that they were gonna introduce their own VLS ambulance, they were gonna, they were gonna create their own ambulance service. Um, the problem is that we staff at, we have three people on duty for each, each shift. So, that's basically enough staffing to handle one unstable patient. If we have a fire call, we tone out, we bring in the troops and we respond to it. That, that initial three people go out and they hold their own for a few minutes until the reinforcements arrive and the mutual aid arrives. Um, if we have a CPR call, somebody drops, we're paging out, because three people is not enough to perform CPR and transport and provide all the medications. If those, if those two, those three people are in Middleborough, that one person sits for now, it used to be an hour, for that would be our turnaround time. But as Mr. LeCammer said, with all the, with all the, the, with all the, the Brockton hospital issue, with, with the staffing issue, with, uh, with the, the hospital staffing issue, with the pandemic issues, all those related things, we're, we're, we're sitting there two and three hours on, 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 on a single ambulance call. And that also rolls into our overtime expense as well, because we're holding people at the station that have been called back from home to cover the station during these calls. We had three hundred and, three hundred and fifty simultaneous calls last year. So, meaning while we have firefighters dedicated to one call, that second call came in. So, we're relying solely on off-duty firefighters to cover those, the subsequent, subsequent calls. And, and that spike, it's, it's a, it's a twenty-one percent increase in spontaneous, simultaneous calls in four years. That's all, that's, that's predominantly related to, to this, this lag at the hospitals. It's, it's like a cascading effect. And, and you're sitting at home, that's, that's, that affects your, your safety, your public safety, that's, that's your, you know, the outcome of a fire at your house or a medical emergency at your house. So, it's, it's, there's all these cascading effects to these problems that we're seeing, you know, within the region that affect the way we manage our budget back here in Lakeville and it's, it's challenging.
Uh, chief, you, excuse me, I just wanna follow up on one thing, Brian. Chief, you agreed that you put this chart together and sent it to us two weeks ago, okay? This chart, which showed all the mutual aid calls and where they were coming from.
Yep.
All the communities were pretty much leveled.
Yep.
You know, one or two here and there. Middleborough was through the roof.
Yeah.
Why doesn't Middleborough call all the towns?
So, they do.
You asked that question, Brian?
Why, why us?
Why us?
Well, because we have paramedics, number one.
And those are, I think, you guys know that the, the geography better than I do, but I think their population leans this way more. And the Halifax chief and the Pembroke chief all complain about the same things that I do. They, they lean on them as well, but not, not to the degree and it's.
But you get Rainier, right there on forty-four. You know, Brewster is doing Taunton, you know, why don't they have enough ambulances on that, on that run?
It's difficult.
All the bridge waters?
It's difficult for me to, to talk, speak to every deficiency that's in there. You, and I don't wanna fling mud, but, you know, it's, it's funny how long these, our turnaround times are compared to the private ambulance system. And it's, people are gonna sit at home and, you know, if they work for a private ambulance company, they're gonna get, they're gonna hate my guts for saying that, but it's true.
No, nobody's saying it, you're doing a great job. The problem is you're doing a terrific job. It's, the question is, why are we providing all these services outside of our community all the time?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, uh, the, the chief is new also in Middleborough, fairly new, what, five, six months? So, I think our hope too is that, you know, he'll be able to, you know, address some of this going forward, although I'm not sure with the news today on.
I mean, it's my first call tomorrow.
Yeah.
And, and I, I told him, this is, this is a political issue, it's, it's a matter of right and wrong, fairness. Um, and he acknowledged all of it and he, he agrees that it's, it's a problem. Um, he promised to adjust his policies, um, and there's, there's a lot that can be done, there's a lot to be.
Now, to Brian's follow-up question, why aren't we always being called?
Why, I, I think it's, I think it's, um, I think it's like the, the population's at that line, like that, that whole area, the downtown section is, is mostly where we run to. And, and I think we're closer to that area than, than, than other fire stations. And, and I think we're closer to that area than, than, than other fire stations, than, than other mutual aid.
Middleborough was a big, big, well, second biggest town in the state. Here it was. Here it was, it's huge. Anyways, which brings up my, my question, you know, and once again, I, I would say you guys have done a great job. But if you look at the overtime costs, you know, and you know this, chief, because you and I talked about it a number of times, that, you know, the overtime cost in two thousand and twenty-two was seventy-three dollars, seventy-three thousand, excuse me. And the budget we're in right now is eighty-three thousand dollars. We already spent eighty-three percent of our overtime budget. And, uh, and that is related a lot to the mutual calls that they're, they're calling on.
It's, uh, this other, is one other big factor. So one of our, our leading callback, uh, the, one of the people that made probably the most money out of callbacks is, is sitting on the wall there. And when she got promoted to deputy, she stopped making, uh, overtime and callbacks. And then we had another individual that was, that was out on long-term leave. And that person was also right up there with, with, uh, with her as far as callbacks. That, that, that gentleman came back to work and he doesn't pass up on an opportunity to come back. And, and it's great because he lives close to the station.
I have no problem with the overtime for our own staff and covering our own stations. Hundred percent support behind that. But a lot of these calls, and it's gone up ten thousand dollars just in this past month alone.
Yep.
And I just, well, you're going to run out of money, there's no question about it, you know? So, so then the question becomes, you're asking for a hundred and ten thousand dollars, you know, a ten thousand dollar increase, ain't going to do it.
No, I've asked for more, but that's where it settled.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's a problem.
I know, but it's, I know, I agree with you, it's a problem. And that's why I made an attempt early in my presentation to connect the revenue to my budget, because.
You can't look at it that way, I'm sorry, that's all general revenue. It's not to belong to the fire department.
But the callback guy generates the revenue by staffing my second ambulance. If he's not there, that revenue isn't there. And that's what I'm trying to communicate out.
It doesn't work that way, sorry.
It, I, I mean, I'm trying to be, I, I don't want to be.
You can't, you can't look at it that way. It's like, okay, the building inspections, permit fees were up three hundred thousand dollars last year. This year they're down to one forty-five, and that's a fact, okay? So does that mean then we say, oh geez, we don't have enough money to cover your staff and the, and the, uh, and the inspectional services offered? We're going to lay people off. It, it goes both ways, but we don't work, oh, I'm sorry. It's never worked that way in this town, so. Anyways.
The data attracted me, how much of that OT was a direct result of mutual aid that we then had to backfill?
That's a good point, Brian.
So, you know, if we're at eighty-three thousand right now, was twenty thousand because we got called out for mutual aid? Was fifty thousand because we called up mutual aid? It'd be nice to be able to send an invoice and say, you know, mutual aid has directly resulted in us spending more OT.
Yeah, I mean.
At least send a gift basket.
Well, mutual aid also can benefit in our direction as well. There may be a time when we're in need of assistance. And, you know, that's the reason it's mutual aid, so. I, I get it, and I think that, you know, it is a, a burden that's placed upon us because of the frequency of the calls. And, and I, it definitely is geographic as far as population, because actually I just saw one of our units not too long ago on, right in the center of Middleborough, I was out for dinner and I saw one, and it was a call booth, but I saw, you know, um, I mean, we are billing for, for the call, we're just losing.
We average about a thousand dollars in ambulance care.
Right, and, but we did have to bring in overtime for it, so we, I get both sides and it's a little bit of wash. But again, mutual aid is mutual, so there will be a time, you know, hopefully we never need it, but there may be a time we do need it. But Brewster, I don't get why they're not stepping up on another ambulance. And we, it, it, is all of our calls or mutual aid calls for ambulance or is it ever for fire?
Uh, we go, we go there for fires as well. It's basically you, you run, you, you need about fifteen or sixteen firefighters to run a, a simple Ruben contents fire.
Right.
And, and it's, you can't have that many people on duty, it's just not manageable or financially responsible. Have them sit around for, for a month or two waiting for that fire to break out. And so we rely on mutual aid to handle these fires. We, if a fire in the town here, we'll have three towns come into, easily three towns come into Lakeville to help us out. And then part of that is, is being there for them and having that, that, that balance. Withdrawing from a mutual aid agreement is huge for my firefighter's safety because they're my backup. They're my, my rip team, they're my, my rescue team for my firefighters.
Agreed. And that's why I feel, you know, it, it may be tit for tat, but we, we definitely, being part of the mutual aid is important. Unfortunately, we're at the short end of the stick right now, but when you're at a fire and you need that, that backup, you know, if you're not on a mutual aid program, you know, lives are going to be lost in there. That's the, never worth it all, is what I'm concerned.
There's no doubt that we need to, we need to manage the Middleborough situation, there's just no doubt that we need to. And, and, you know, as I said, the first call is going to be tomorrow morning and I'll get on it. But there, there'll become a time where if I don't feel like I'm making progress, then, then my next call is going to be to Ari. And it has to be at a higher level. Because I, I can't be in a position where I don't, I don't, I wouldn't be able to live with myself saying no to an ambulance, sending an ambulance out. And we do say no, we've modified our policies. So if we have one ambulance dedicated for town service, we won't page out overtime if they ask for an ambulance, we tell them to go somewhere else. So, so that's a change in our policy within the last few years. So we don't, we don't, we don't respond, if one of our units is committed, I don't know if I made that clear, we won't call people in to send our second ambulance to Middleborough, it stays in town, we don't call people in. That's, that's a modification of policy, I'm correct? It's, but it's tough for me to do that because I know there's somebody in need sitting in Middleborough that's, um, I, I could be harming, right, potentially. So it's, it's a difficult thing for us to get to there. And it's a difficult thing to say no when we do have people here and you're hearing their, their engines, their fire engines on scene and, and whatever the case may be. They assisted with the delivery of a baby the other day, Ari, who was in Middleborough. Like, how do you not help? And I, I think we need to manage the situation and do what we can to motivate them. But it's difficult to withdraw completely from a mutual aid agreement because people suffer at the end of the day. And we could suffer too because that means the return trips into town stop, you know? It's, it's a difficult thing to manage.
I mean, they have helped us, helped us out a few times with like false alarms at the industrial park when our crews were tied up. So, you know, they do come this way too, it's not necessarily an ambulance coming here, but.
No, I, I agree, and that's why I say I think mutual aid is important and, you know, we can't just throw it away because.
It's a small gest, it's a small gesture, but it's, it's almost like acknowledgement of their burden on us. Because they send, they'll send all seven or eight guys into town for, for any fire that we have, no matter where it is. Because they realize, they, there's no, there's no arguing that the, our ambulance service is, is being abused by them. Just call what it is.
Yep. All right, does anyone have any other specific questions? Anything, anyone for fire?
That was easy.
Okay. All right, thank you, chief.
Nah, it's okay, I feel like, I feel like, I don't know where you guys did the stuff. All right, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, chief.
All right, next we have Police Chief Matt Perkins.
Page thirty-five. Hello.
So for those of you who don't know, he's a full-service chief, actually have known to set up the room on occasion for meetings too.
I do it all custodial work. Administrative work, police work.
We have risk cats and dogs as well.
So, um, so, okay. Do you want to give us a summary of what we have here? I know overtime again is always a question with the police budget. I do know that the, um, the estimate for the contractual stuff for is sitting in the.
The last line in the salary section, compensation reserve.
That's seventy-five thousand dollars at the bottom.
Collector bargaining agreement that's not settled for next year.
So that's where that is.
Another major change is, um, night differential for, uh, dispatchers is a new thing this year. We, we met with them at their request and they, and, uh, and we discussed, uh, you know, priorities and that was the one thing that came out.
Yeah. So, uh, the enhance, so the budget that I have, uh, one point three five percent represents just contractual obligations and step increases. I did submit a couple enhancements. One of them is the funding of an additional sergeant position where I foresee or envision a current sergeant at the role of detective. So I would have to fill his position. That cost is nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. And the, uh, shift differential line for dispatchers that was, uh, put in to incentivize part-time dispatchers and dispatchers taking shifts, um, three to eleven and the overnight eleven to seven shifts. It gives them an incentive to take it so I don't have to fill it with overtime, um, like a part-timer or something like that. And that's something that the patrol has, that, um, there is a shift differential, they get paid a, a percentage to work the overnights. And that's, uh, that's what that is, there was no parity between the dispatches and the police. The police got it, dispatch didn't get it. So that kind of brings them up in line, um, with them. And funding that would be seventy-two thousand dollars. And then in the expense side, there's a, an increase in fuel. And that's, that's my only, uh, expense side. Those are my, those are my two enhancements that I have. And then I'll answer any questions on, uh, any of my budgets.
Hi, Nancy.
To your dispatch, uh, dispatching, um, so how many dispatches are on each of?
Uh, one dispatch.
One dispatch.
Sometimes I'll have two of this own training, I'll put some extra on if there's a grant patrol out or if there's a storm, stolen coverage, I'll have one dispatch.
And they're, and they're doing all dispatch, police and fires, is it a ring down to fire or you're doing early arrival?
We do, we do police fire dispatch where the.
And you do the early arrival instruction and so forth?
Yes, and we do, uh, EMD.
Okay. Actually, it's a pretty good budget then, so, I mean, that was my only question.
Anybody else?
On your question, I didn't even think to look at fire, but no change in electricity costs? I know that's kind of a boring question, but I'm just kind of surprised.
So which we, when we first moved into this building, we threw an estimate out there what it was going to cost for electricity. And that's been, uh, right on the whole time, so there's been no changes in electricity.
It was running a little bit underfroded there, Brian, now it's probably about a budget.
Okay, just doing the powerful next door.
It's an efficient.
I'm glad one of them is.
Rich, anything?
I'm all set.
You're all set.
Quite familiar with it.
Lauren, anything?
No, I'm actually good.
Good.
No more mutual aid conversations, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, thank you. Wow, that was quick. Uh, next we have Frank Mies, DPW and Transfer Station.
Page fifty-three and seventy-two.
Way ahead of schedule, that's good though, huh?
It's good. Obviously, there it goes. Oh, man, all right.
All right.
Ready?
Sure.
I'll, I'll start with the public works. On the salaries, um, I have one enhancement to speak, uh, which is the hourly wages for the clerk. That ends up being after her contractual obligations, that she'd be going into, it's roughly a thirteen hundred dollar increase. That, that's, that's the enhancement, which should be moving from a level two, step six to a grade B, step two. And, uh, that, that's the enhancement there. All the other, um, percentage increases are all contractual obligations such as, uh, you know, most of my guys are at the top step, which received the step, the four percent increase this year. On top of that would be the, um, CDL stipend, which is new this year through the, the union contract. Which, which I'll just say, um, the labor union is very happy with the union contract this year. And they should be, I think it's, it's great work on everyone involved in that. Any questions on the salary part of it? All right, I'll move right into expenses. Everything's level funded except for my vehicle gasoline and diesel for, you know, obvious reasons. If you look at the, you know, twenty-two year and then as the prices go up and we also had, um, we're fully staffed now, so for the first time in, in quite a while. So that obviously has, has something to do with it. But other than that, everything's, everything else is level funded.
Questions?
I'll just mention quick, snow and ice, street lighting, all level funded. Cemetery is also level funded, that's, that's ran through the cemetery commission, that stays under, under my budget, just, we work together with that.
Snow doing so far this year?
Really good. We use a lot of salt this year, um, we haven't had to call contractors in this year, which is unfortunate from a budget standpoint, it's not, standpoint, it's not unfortunate, but, you know, for the future, it may be, considering, you know, we hope the guys come back every year, it's, it's a struggle to fill those positions. So, but yeah, we're in good shape, it's snow nice.
Yeah, but you're always attentive to the rates going on out there and come to us if you feel as though, you know, we need to be more competitive in order to get people to, to commit.
That's for sure, I'll, I'll definitely speak for that, the selectmen and Ari have been, um, very supportive. And we've been trying to match Mass DOT's rates, um, at a minimum, even though, you know, if, if you're out there trying to look for hours, you'd go to Mass DOT. Yeah, I probably shouldn't say that. But, you know, for guys that own businesses and things like that, that are actually working through the winters now, like a lot are, that just want to pick up some hours, you know, during storms, then it's kind of ideal for them and they're getting paid at a good rate. And it, and it has attracted some contractors, but we're kind of losing kind of the old, it's kind of like an old school group that did a lot of that plow contracting. And, you know, it's kind of, it's tough to get them now. Any other questions on DPW and I'll move over to Transfer Station.
Quick one.
Sure.
Every year, obviously, we put money aside to do roadway improvements. I'm just curious, um, I know you typically always have a paving plan going out a few years. What roads do you think you might be hitting in the next fiscal year?
This year, um, before the fiscal year actually starts, I believe we're going to be able to get Pickens Street done, um, with a resurfacing. As soon as the fiscal year kicks in, um, we're hoping to do South Pickens, South Kingman, um, another resurfacing project. And then we're also going to possibly do a couple, um, preservation, uh, projects. So thinking, um, Kingman Street to do a Cape Seal. We also may get into, do a Fog Seal on, um, a couple other roads, we haven't decided that yet. But that's some of the projects we have, we're looking to get a minimum of three or four roads done this year with the money we have.
Yeah. My follow-up question is kind of related to the parks, obviously DPW took over a ton of work with maintenance and such there. It's been two or three years now, maybe, somewhere around that. Feel that arrangement's working out well, you still feel you're staffed enough to cover both obligations?
We'll say, I'm staffed enough, um, but obviously that, that's, that's probably a conversation for another time. But, um, you know, at some point, need, need to have some work done with that.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I would agree that it's probably a work in progress. But I do know that I hear all the time from folks that have noticed the difference at the parks. You know, they're like, wow, what's going on? And, and for a lot of people though, they, they think that that's the way it all. And for a lot of people, though, they think that that's the way it always was done, and it was just almost neglected. They didn't know that the DPW hasn't been doing that all along. So, you know, that's a new, and I think there's, you know, a few things that, you know, need to be worked out, but in the same way, we've worked out a lot.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I never knew till I met and started working with Frank that other communities all charge road fees for, like, the races and stuff. So, you know, we tasked Ari and Frank to come together. I think, Brian, you might have even caught the beginning or the end, I'm not sure. And, you know, they came together and they created a whole plan by which we charge now, you know, because he's sending the street sweeper out and, you know, everything to prep. So, there's a lot of work that, you know, has gone on in the background. So I think the whole parks thing still, you know, needs some fine tuning, but I think we'll get there.
Yeah. Obviously, like you said, though, the increase, we've increased in staff a little bit, replaced a lot of equipment over the last five years, which made, you know, everything much more efficient. A lot of the things that were taking us days to do, now we can get done in a half a day. You know, a lot of those things have really progressed here, and hopefully they continue on that track.
Anybody else questions on that? Or are we going to go to Transfer?
Yeah, a question please. Thank you.
Yep.
We talk about this every year, Frank, and we talk about the two-state roads here that we have here.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, the last couple of years, the state's been telling us they're going to redo 18. And this has nothing to do with you.
Yeah, no, I have.
I know you talked to them all.
Yep.
And, of course, they put a bunch of patches there this year. Can you follow up to find out if they're going to actually pave this road? Because it's really breaking up.
Yeah, yep.
They're supposed to do from Route 79 down to the traffic light here. I can't speak for the other man, but they tell us in the spring and they tell us in the fall, yeah, you're what going to do, we're going to do it. They don't do it. The other one is a major problem, is the county road.
Yes.
You know, I don't know why they paved county road from 79 up to the Lakeville line, and they stopped.
And they paved the other side also in Berkeley, right?
That road has got some serious problems.
Yeah. It has cement on earth, too.
Pardon me?
They've never removed the cement underneath the road.
I know. The other problem that we have on county road is that they're supposed to be cleaning, cleaning up the trash and so forth, and it gets really bad.
Yeah, we get calls on it consistently.
I know. So, I appreciate if you could, once again, call from here and see if we can, maybe have the documented or something with Ari or whatever, but, I mean, this is ridiculous. They haven't done anything here in town, except for those few patches that they put on 18 here. Thank you.
Yep.
Speaking of roads, I know we've talked about it at select board meetings, but, you know, Frank and his department have won a couple of awards for road projects, so it's always nice to see. I didn't know, you know, FinCom knows that, but, you know, we have the...
Do you dream of actually recovering? You know, to actually, like, drive that street and not worry about what's coming. I used to, you go around some of those tighter bends and you'd be avoiding the puddles there, hoping a car's not oncoming, and I can just stay in the lane. So, thank you, guys.
We're making, definitely making good progress with the road work, in my opinion, as far as the last couple of years going, with the additional monies that we've been getting. Company with the Chapter 90, we've been able to do a pretty good push. And now we're able to do a little bit of preservation, like Highland Road was a preservation job. That was a Cape Seal, which saves a lot of money and buys you a lot of time. So hopefully, we can continue on that.
Transfer Station.
Start on 72.
So, Transfer Station, personnel, everything listed within here are contractual obligations along with some stipends that were also contractual through the new labor union agreement. It has no enhancements here to speak of. Any questions on the personnel side?
That's the big jump in what we're going to talk.
Yeah. Maybe Todd can help me?
Yeah, sure. So, that's just that this particular group of employees has a much higher risk rating that we've experienced through the insurance renewals. And it's based on, you know, it's a rate based on the estimated payroll.
Okay. Then we'll move into expenses. The big jump you see, or two pretty sizable jumps here, we see our contracted services and bulky waste disposal. I'll just speak on that right now. So, the contracted services bulky waste disposal, so that covers all our, you know, construction materials, things like that. We've seen a big increase in that. The price continues to rise in that. But another thing we're seeing now, which some people are aware of, some are not, are things like glass, cardboard, some plastics, things of that nature. We're no longer getting revenue on those. So we're still recycling them the way we have in the past, but when you dispose of them now, you're actually paying out by the ton rather than collecting money. That's actually been on that trend for a couple of years now. And we've kind of left the budget alone for those couple of years, trying to hope that it would turn around, and unfortunately, it's not. So we're always out shopping for the best prices we can, as far as getting rid of, every once in a while, cardboard will go to the store, which is good. But we're no longer getting the money we were for mixed paper, cardboard, glass, all that, now you're paying to get rid of instead of getting a value on, which we have, you know, in prior years. And then the contracted services really doesn't, hasn't gone up that much. That's a very small number within there. That's more like the true green, you know, weed killer. We have contractors come in, that's part of the landfill post-closure agreement, that we do that. But that's where that jump comes in. It's solely based on the increase in cost for disposal, as I'm sure everyone keeps hearing about, and then also the fact that we're now paying a higher rate to get rid of a lot of recyclables, which, you know, isn't ideal, but there's no way around it. And then the other jump, just as, you know, we're seeing with every other budget, is the vehicle diesel increase. Sitting with Todd, we just, you know, we put it just under what we were in 2022, and we're on that same track to be over budget this year, which is unfortunate, but it's just kind of how it goes. There's no real, there's no extra trips or anything. It's all, you know, it's all basically level work going. And then the property liability insurance increase, I guess that's something Todd might...
Yeah, it's the new equipment that we put in, and it's both the facility and the equipment that's insured.
Okay. So we did, so through the capital program, we did purchase the new loader.
Yes, new loader.
Beginning of last fiscal year.
Right.
Which is a huge improvement.
And we're looking to replace the roll-off truck next year, 25, I should say.
Yep.
So I have a question. So, we have a 91% increase in insurance liability because of the two purchases?
$1,800. It is a large percent.
Yeah, I'm saying $1,800.
With a lot of the lines this year, as Franklin mentioned, they're under budgeted, and we're going to have lines that will be over budget. And I don't know, I don't have with me tonight what the actual insurance cost, but we're going to go over $2,000 this year. So actual to budget is not going to be 91%, it's going to be some lower number. Just like bulky waste, he mentioned, we only have $55,000 budgeted. We'll likely exceed that number.
Yeah, we will exceed that.
So, the 12% increase to expenses is budget to budget. The 23 actual is probably going to need some sort of supplement before we get out of this year. And we do have insurance for next year still pending. We've just been advised that the overall value of the premiums will go up 6%. That's what you see in the general fund. That's a very broad average, yeah.
That's a broad average, yeah.
I didn't catch it until just now, but what's the hazardous waste disposal? Looks like it was something we didn't have in the past.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I should have mentioned that.
We need to mention that.
In the past, we've done that as a capital item. So, I had submitted it for a capital item, but after discussions, we decided that, I mean, it's definitely a great service for the town. I don't know if anyone here has utilized it, but...
It's the hazardous waste, you guys.
Yeah, yeah, and it's always, you know, it's well-attended. It's great to see the people bringing in the things that they're bringing in, rather than keeping them stored. And so it's just, rather than going for the capital, I was going for a capital item for three years' worth, but considering it's more of an operational thing, we figured we would add it into the budget rather than going for capital. And then we were able to do a cutoff on that. So, when we work with these companies, we tell them, this is the money we have for this year. And I have guys on, working on site, along with whichever company happens to be the company we get, and we have a threshold that when it stops there.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds to make sense, Paul.
Just a comment, you know, the revenue numbers, this is an enterprise fund, and the enterprise fund is revenue versus expenses, and it has to stay within itself. And just so you know, he's at 78%, you know, of his budget through February, so that's good. So the numbers have been stable, you know, the last couple of years, so that's not a problem. Great.
Yeah, we have seen good numbers with revenue. And also will be, I've been working with Jen and Dave Thomas, our lead operator, and the last time we had any kind of increase at the transfer station, I believe, was 2019. So, we're going to come up, we've been working on some modest numbers, we're going to increase the cost of most of the things on our list throughout the transfer station, but really, it's not even so much to, it is obviously to make more revenue, but it's offsetting all these costs that we have associated with the increase in cost to dispose of everything, so.
But isn't that where we get into the conversation that we don't want to overcharge?
Yes.
Because we'd rather have someone bring their piece of whatever to the transfer station as opposed to dumping it in the woods somewhere.
Yeah, that's one of those fine lines, but I always say, the people who are dumping things in the woods and dumping things on, like our famous spot on Cross Street, things like that, those people, typically when they leave their house, they know that's where they're going to get rid of it. You know, they're not going to the transfer station and seeing that it's a $10 increase and like, you know, I'm not paying that extra $10, I'm going to go dump it.
Yes.
You know, but I do, I get that point.
And the bottom line is to be an enterprise fund, it has to recover cost.
Yeah.
Substantially recover cost. So we subsidize this program.
That's that hundred?
There's a tax, that's right, just over $100,000. There's an annual tax subsidy, just to be clear. Thank you.
I just want to mention the mattress program that we have, that people can bring free mattresses to the transfer station, because you know what they do, they dump them on Cross Street, or they dump them on the side of the roads, but why don't you explain what that's about?
Yeah, so we did, we had the mat, so that actually expired, and it's not renewed, unfortunately, but that did help us greatly. But the price for a recyclable mattress is relatively low. That's another thing with this contracted services bulky waste disposal line, is the price of non-recyclable mattresses now have to be disposed of on their own, and they're very high. So that's one of the things that you'll see when I present it to the selectmen, is one of the items that went, I don't have the numbers in front of me as far as that goes. I think it's, I want to say it's like $30, that's going to go up to almost $100 to get rid of a non-recyclable mattress, because that's what, and that's not us making money on it, that's us just breaking even on getting rid of the mattress. But there's a lot of kind of things like that coming along, and we're in hopes that we follow, you know, we keep following to try to hope that they bring back the mattress incentive that we're just talking about, because that wasn't great help. They were taking them for free, and they were actually, we were paying anything other than the manpower to stack them into the containers, but they picked them up, disposed them for free. That was a great program, but it just recently expired, and they don't, there's no revenue on it, so we'll open another grant for that comes up, and that's something that Jen will jump right on if it does come up.
Anybody else? Nathan? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I do know that Frank has a couple things on here for capital plan, because we're doing capital plan next, right?
There was a new handout.
New handout.
Wednesday night.
Landscaped handout.
Page one.
There you go.
The back of your book.
So, do you want to just go over Frank's, or do you want to just go over it in general?
We're just planning to go over generally, ask any questions. Todd, why don't you? Go ahead, Todd.
How do you want to do this, like?
Well, I think we probably just recount, first of all, that the capital expenditures committee, expenditures committee met last week.
Yep.
And approved the, recommended the capital plan is presented. The, we've gone over that sort of in, over in general, but Todd, why don't you give the siliconite stick that you gave last time?
Sure. Okay. Will do. So as Ari said, the capital committee has, we, has met and voted to approve this five-year plan. What we'll be bringing to the May annual town meeting are most of, but not all of the items in the FY '24 column. You'll note there's a few footnotes, footnote one or two, which, footnote one represents items that we'll be looking to fund at the special town meeting in May from existing available funds. So there are three of those items. And then we have a couple of items that we think may come before the town later in the year, either in the fall or next spring, depending on how plans for those projects, excuse me, progress, or it may spill into FY '25. The document you have is color-coded, and each color represents a particular funding source. If it's not shaded in a color, we're recommending it be funded from free cash. And at the back end of the document is a summary of each of those sources of funds. So, at the May town meeting, we're not asking for any borrowing authorization, though that may come up later in the year with respect to the design for a new fire station. As you recall, in the fall, Fall Town Meeting appropriated $220,000 for design to continue along for the fire station, for preliminary design. So we've put estimated numbers in there for the station, and that will flush out as the final design phase happens in the future. We do have an annual line, much like for road improvements that we talked about earlier with Franklin. We also have an annual line for technology improvements. We were able to secure a state grant this past year that substantially helped with our disaster recovery and some infrastructure needs. So, we feel we're positioned well in technology to take a year off, so that previously had $100,000 placeholder, which we believe we're good until FY '25. The security improvements are for the town buildings. This is a supplement to a previous capital article. Once we've gone through with input from the police department on what we need to do and start pricing, we're about $41,000 short. So this is something we'd like to fast-track via the special town meeting, and it would be funded through overlay surplus, which has already been released by the Board of Assessors.
Question on that project, Todd or anybody? I think that was originally up May 2021, we might have appropriated.
That sounds about right.
And at that time, we had gotten some quotes, and we had staged the work in a number of phases. Phase one, we kind of built a foundation with some stuff, some few cameras, card access, et cetera, and kind of had a long-term project where it would go phase by phase, but I don't believe any of that work has been done yet.
Camera work at the town hall has been done.
Just the cameras?
Yeah. The card access was deferred, depending on, depending on, depending what would happen as far as the town hall study and all that, and all that, when that Fall Town Meeting failed, we kind of put that aside, and now we're looking at that again. There's a, a plant, this would allow, without giving too much detail in the open meeting, this would allow for effective coverage of most, nearly all town facilities from a camera standpoint.
I think my concern is just that we're back two years later, and costs of all this stuff has gone up, and waiting... And waiting, are we now paying more?
Yeah, I don't want to talk about too much in a public meeting, but this is a scope change as well. It's a broader, it's a broader, the original concept was primarily town hall, I believe, and this is...
Town hall with integration with existing systems in this building.
Right, right. And there's some issues here that we really don't want to talk about in an open meeting. But the, but I have to talk to you about that offline. But the, the, the project as it exists now would allow for coverage for a number of town facilities beyond town hall. That's what we're looking at as well, so the scope has expanded a bit.
All right, I just don't want to be in, since Frank's sitting here, a similar position where we're allocating money every year for something, and then it just never gets off.
There may be another phase of this.
Like your building?
There absolutely may be, and probably will be another phase of this. But it won't be the same work, it'll be different work. It'll be expansions of the program, the car access, or possibly a few more cameras and a few more places that we need to have coverage, things like that. But we won't be, this won't be happening because, you know, costs come up and we don't have enough money for what we were planning to do.
To follow up on Brian's question, when we did meet as a board in the executive session to discuss the security plans for whatever it was, not going to get into the specifics of it, but there was one specific area that was discussed up above this number that is not included in this budget.
Following up on a discussion that you and I had the other night, I have Rich Johnson with the head of Maltese about the number for that, which I had done before. I just, it was the last, I apologize for chip, and I just forgot. And the, he told me that he's meeting with a vendor this week, and that he hopes to have the number by then. So we may need to amend this.
Okay, because I think that piece was pretty important.
Yeah, I understand. Again, I do apologize very much.
Does anyone have any questions for Frank's part of his capital here?
So again, we're looking to continue the road improvement program, and he did touch on that during his budget discussion. A couple of pieces of equipment are replaced, to replace a sander and have somebody worked on it, $35,000. A four-by-four pickup truck for $70,000 with equipment. And a storage shed, which Franklin can speak to more better than I, which has a price tag of $60,000. I would also point out to you, at the bottom of the public works section, we have a to-be-determined number related to the facility, you'll recall, that we got very high prices.
Yeah, it's not ready to be unveiled yet, but it was talked about at a recent board meeting.
But my point for mentioning that is it may make sense to fold the shed and/or the parking lot and drainage you see in the next year into the overall project. But there may be some economy or sense to doing that, but I'll stand down.
One thing I would say, I don't toot the horn that often on this, but one thing I would say in the two years I've been here, how impressed I am by the work that Frank does in acquiring vehicles. He's very careful about it, usually seems to find almost new vehicles that cost about half of a new vehicle would cost, and they're in fantastic shape. Just the, I think the street sweep we got recently, it's very impressive. And, you know, I think the board, frankly, we should be very pleased by that.
It's a year out, but the paving, the DPDW lot needed the drainage, is that, how to explain it? Is this like in front of your fence, past the fence, because if there's a building project going on, what's the plan?
The paving would be to repave the lot. The lot's getting really bad, in bad shape, and then we would have to put, so basically, in the front of our lot, on the street side, we would need to put a retention area there, and some basins to catch everything, to put into that retention area. So that was just going to the road, going across into the waters.
If everything works out well, Brian, this will be a good follow-on, so we'll be doing the DPDW building. We'll be able to do that in a year or so.
Last thing, your concept was, the building that would go there would kind of be on the front side of the garage, and then around the grassy area, right?
Yep, yep.
So we wouldn't be paving and digging right back in?
No, 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 no.
There'll be some churning up around it, though.
I'm assuming the $60,000 shed's not like a Rubbermaid shed we're picking up?
Nah, so it's similar to...
$60,000 a big shed?
Yeah.
I'm thinking, you know, a cigar lounge in there, too.
Yeah, but I might have to add a little more to this capital item. It's a 40-by-30 aluminum shed with concrete base, put an asphalt floor. Basically, it's, it's just to get equipment under cover. So long-term, you know, obviously, long-term, it saves us money by, you know, meaning it's on equipment. Because right now, a lot of our equipment is just sitting out there year-round.
So it's not like a tool shed, it's going to be a garage?
Yes, yep.
I know Chief Parkinson's is here, if anyone wants to ask about cruisers. It's a pretty standard item.
They're expensive.
Yes, they are.
The one thing that we're finding that will be happening, very much choice soon, will be to put in hybrids.
Yes.
Because of the margin, those are expensive vehicles.
I get quotes on hybrids. So a quote as of last week for a hybrid cruiser with equipment is $63,000. And they said if we order, if we put our order in now, we're not getting them until FY '25. So that's, I, that's something that's kind of, if that's still the case, and there's such a delay on the delivery of a hybrid, that's kind of a deal breaker. Which is unfortunate, because they're in high demand, and everybody's ordering.
There's a $43,000 savings if you don't go hybrid, they are available, but you have to.
What's the price for a regular? So a regular cruiser equipped, same Ford, is $60,000 equipped. It's pretty close. Yeah, yeah, it's $3,000 more, so it'll be $6,000 if we get two cruisers per year.
Have the hybrid models been out long enough for departments using them to realize what the maintenance differential is?
So we have one, we're evaluating it right now. Yeah, we did get one last year, and we're evaluating it.
Still working, so?
Yeah, so far, so good.
You haven't heard any, I mean, I deal with police departments all the time.
The center car was all electric.
That we can have a conversation about, I can tell you, I can tell you horror stories.
Yeah, and I'm not so little guy.
Problem I've ever talked to with a...
Because at the conference last September, we had, they had on exhibit hall, they had on display, let me show you that, Dodge, I think?
Yeah, they're all coming up with that.
They all have one, so, yeah. They eliminated the fire part of the facility. The, so you're looking basically at two cruisers a year? Well, not quite two cruisers a year, a cruiser and two-thirds of a cruiser for each year.
Correct.
Because you're about $63,000 total, about, right, fully equipped?
Yes, for the hybrid, so, yeah. But right now, it's up to 60. And then we'll do a trade-in, so we'll trade in one for one, so.
We're trading, we trade out our vehicles, trade in and repurpose?
Yeah, so one point is in net cost.
Can you just remind the folks at home who are saying we should keep these cars until they have 200,000 miles? Why is that, we don't do that?
They get up there, we're trading them in right around 150,000 miles. It's about a five-year lifespan if it's on patrol all the time. The unmarks last a little longer than that, the administrative cars, and it's, they're hard miles. It's not like, oh, my guy has 150,000, this is like 150,000 pursuit-rated miles. There's also idle miles on it.
Idle in time, yeah.
So Ford says 150,000 miles is like, there's a calculation, and it's like 400, equivalent to 400,000 miles. So there's a, if you can Google it, it'll pop up for police cruiser conversion, idle miles.
The idle miles must get strangely different once you've got hybrid in play.
I know.
It's just sitting there on a battery pack.
Sometimes. Sometimes, the longer it sits, the less the battery, where it just kicks over to the gas more. But there, that's what, but most towns seem to be happy with it. I don't think we're going to see any huge massive fuel savings, but more maintenance stuff.
Probably like 8, 10 miles per gallon.
What's that?
Probably 8 or 10 miles per gallon.
Yeah, you know, I mean, depending on, for the type of work, I mean, if it's Joe Average's vehicle, yeah. My wife has a Prius, I can make it to New York and back on, you know, 10 gallons of gas, which is great. But that's not sitting idling, doing traffic duty, and that's not chasing somebody down, because that's all standard driving, not pursuit driving. Pursuit driving in idle time is completely different than Joe Average's vehicle. But yeah, I have no, I can tell you every town I know that has them, I've heard of them that have them. Just going to be more than 120,000 after this year.
Anybody, any other questions on, we finished that, Todd, or no, I can't remember?
The fire? The fire department, we have the first lease payment for the new ladder truck that was ordered last June, $1.4 million truck. And the first payment was delayed, this would be made in June of '24. Payment one, because of the length of time it's taking to construct and then take delivery of the ladder truck. So the lease is sort of structured when we take delivery. Hopefully, at the time, our first payment will be due. The fire department did identify two other pieces of equipment which we're looking to fund from unused balances of old prior year capital items, thermal imaging and firefighter tracking for $25,000, and pump operations equipment for $20,000. So those two would be funded through an article to use old capital at the special town meeting, much like we did this past year when we bought the air compressor for DPW and the fire command vehicle.
Can I raise chair?
Yes.
Suggestion, but you may want to defer the parks discussion to the parks commissions here next week.
Yeah, yep.
So kind of to the important, I do.
On the flip side, we just have two items for '24. And the continuation of the, looking at the senior center, that's not, would not be going before the May town meeting. We do have feasibility funds now, and also a state earmark grant that came in to assist the town. So that may not happen until next spring. And we've targeted FY '25 for a potential construction of an addition at the senior center.
I'd like to comment on that. $500,000 isn't going to do it, not even close, so.
It's going to be a challenge, yeah.
So I don't know if you want to bump that number up, because $500,000 is not even close to what's going to be done.
I think what I'd like to do, I think you're right, Rich, I mean, I've had that conversation. I think that's, I think that's going to be a challenge, knowing what we know about construction costs nowadays in the facility. I'm thinking a wild guess at it, I'd rather, let's see how the feasibility study goes, get a cost estimate, and then we'll...
The only thing I say about that is that people see this, and they look at it, and they say, it's $500,000 to put this addition on, wow, that's not bad, you know, everybody gets excited about it. Then you come back with a million and a half dollars.
Well, it's a point, I mean, that's basically the problem with the DPW building, so.
So, I just, it's way too low. You can't build anything for $500,000.
I agree as well.
We'll build a shed.
Whatever, I'm just saying.
And just another item that I mentioned to the capital committee last week, cemeteries. You'll recall, this was a request in the five-year plan a year ago. FY '24, the cemetery commission is not able to get these posts currently, and they've asked to defer this to FY '25. It may also be a candidate for funding from community preservation. So that, it just is a point.
Todd, do we have a mechanism in the event that suddenly, because they, it's not just going and getting posts, they have to get posts that are a certain age, stone, look, et cetera, there's a number of criteria.
Right.
I mean, if they find themselves in a position where suddenly they find a vendor that's like, hey, we just found eight of these things out back we didn't even know we had, do we have a method to obtain these if possible? If we just defer, yeah.
Reserve fund transfer?
Yeah, is that my assumption?
The move is, was that the commission's request?
Yeah, it was really at their request. I was advocating we get the funding in '24, but they, they were appreciative, but they talked to the, I guess, the vendor or the supplier, and were assured that it's, that there was nothing that could be done in the next year or so. I can circle back to them if you'd like.
That changes, we always have the Fall Town Meeting.
Right.
If that changes, you know, we'll have our new free cash number, we could, it's not a big number, so.
And as I said, major qualify for CPC funding. And parks will be discussed next week.
I think it's probably better.
Again, you know, they've just got modest projects in each year, all planned to be funded from their retained earnings, no tax impact.
Do they brought forward any plans for net new services for things? I mean, most of these are just redoing things we already have.
The closest I'd say to new is that there's a project under development. You know about the Gamash playground, it's not new, that's a renovation, but the project is under development to make the new fields off Bedford Street accessible. And that would involve parking, clearing out those timbers, parking, making, you know, porta pott, porta johns, things like that, to maybe make it usable space. I've heard several numbers bandied around, the park commission's met with it several times, looking, the intention would be an ARPA project, probably about $100,000, $115,000. I've seen some preliminary stuff from them, but I don't, but that's the level of being a budget that I feel like we can bring to the board yet, so hopefully we'll be able to do that soon.
All right, anything else, anyone? Next budget meeting is next Thursday, the 15th. We have a selectmen's meeting Monday night. We will see you guys next Thursday. And girls, sorry.
I don't take offense.
Okay, good, good. I'll let you.
I'll be here for you. Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting?
Someone?
Secretary.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All in favor, Pincal, Maggard?
Secretary, I have a question before we adjourn. Are we going to the public hearing for the regional school district's budget on the 15th?
Not as a board, right?
No, I'm just asking if anybody could...
I want to go as a board.
Yeah, I'm probably going to go.
Me, too.
But we're not really going to post as a board.
No, that's fine, I'm just curious.
All right, any other discussion, all those in favor? Aye, says aye.